This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'm going to call the regular council meeting of September 16th to order.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Kane is excused. Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Here.
Councilmember Walchek?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Are there any modifications? Approval of the minutes from regular enclosed session of September 3rd, 2024. Any changes? Stand is printed. And now we're to public comment. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. It's the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed. All comments should be directed to council and not the audience. Take this. We have no public hearing consent. Consent agenda is bills to be allowed in the amount of $206,714.98. Council authorized Mayor Johnson and Kirk Swite to sign the warrant. B mail reappointment of Kristi Johnson and Michael Mahler to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 1st, 2028.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Is there anyone here from Zonta's for the press? Okay, when I read this, you can come up and take a picture.
We have a presentation.
Chief Ham.
Thank you.
Chief Ham, I jumped way ahead of you.
Good timing. Worked so good because we got the Zonta Club here, so. All right, I'm not here with a request tonight, just a presentation on what the police department is doing for Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October. So this started in 2022 with the police department. And it really, there was a couple of reasons for it. So Friends Together, most you probably remember, had somebody pledge $30,000 if we could match $30,000. So that caught our attention and we also had a couple of staff members who have fought their own cancer battles and we decided that we wanted to get involved, not only to support our staff, but also to help match the $30,000 for Friends Together. So go forward, just one more slide, please. So this was from the first year in 2022 and that's Officer Linessa Melberg on the sign. She was featured on that sign out in front of Friends Together. She is a survivor of cancer. She had articles running the paper, obviously was there as well and it was on a billboard. She has been a ton of help in this and organizing what we've done the past couple of years. And I really want to make sure, she couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to make sure that she received the credit that she's due. We go to the next slide, please. This was our flyer from 2022 and that patch that I passed around. So what we did is we bought uniform shirts and we put on the pink patches that we wear throughout the month of October. It was really a big hit and we offered those patches for sale to the public and all the proceeds went directly to Friends Together. And it was really well received, both in the public as well with my staff as well. The next slide was a picture of Officer Melberg and myself presenting a bag of money to Friends Together, which is always a good day. And the following slide is the flyer for last year for 2023. So we continued to wear the uniforms with the pink patches and then we added pink bracelets last year and members of the Alpena Fire Department joined us as well. It went over very well and again, they were for sale for $10 and offered to the public. And the following slide was a picture that we took out in front of the Public Safety Building with some of our fire friends with a check to Friends Together. So this year, what we're looking to do is create a poker chip, which is already in the works with our badge on one side of the poker chip and our patch on the other side. You know, I had got with our city managers to make sure that that was going to be okay, obviously with these types of things getting offered for sale to the public. And she thought it was a wonderful idea and asked that I bring it to your attention as well. So that is the plan. I don't know that I sent that sheet around, but that was just a sample poker chip, obviously. It's still in production. We expect it to be here by October 1st. And again, the plan is to offer those for sale for $10 with the proceeds to go to Friends Together. Now, the last slide there, just our fundraising efforts for the past couple of years. Through our efforts, we've been able to donate $3,510 to Friends Together. So you're very welcome. No requests, it feels good to bring something positive and not be asking for anything.
Okay, we're down to announcements. deadline to file as a write-in for mayor and council member seats is Friday, October 25th, 2024, 11:00 PM. And you have to have that into the curbside. Now we're to. Now we're to, tonight we have a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So whereas October 24, 2024 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a platform for educating women about the importance of early detection of breast cancer through mammography and other methods. And whereas an estimated 310,720 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in American women in 2024 and about 42,250 women will die this year from the disease. And whereas the detection of breast cancer at an early stage greatly improves the chances for successful treatment and survival. And whereas the Zonta Club of Alpena remains dedicated to educating and empowering women to take charge of their own breast health and have organized the 18th Annual Zonta Walk for Women 5K Run Walk for Saturday, October 5th, 2024. Now therefore, I Cindy Johnson, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Alpena, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Alpena and encourage all area citizens to take part and be aware of this occasion in our community.
There'll be one more.
Do you want me to take this or do you want to take?
We take.
Thank you. And I just want to be clear because I haven't, I haven't had, I had a request to speak at their walk. Did they request that I be there?
Oh. Thank you.
Okay. I'll reach out because I thought you had sent me, they requested I be there and I said I would.
Okay.
But I haven't heard anything. I'll, I'll be. Thank you. Report of officers. We have Rachel.
Good evening, everyone. So as a follow-up to the purchase agreement approved of the U.S. 23 North property with Allison Financial LLC for the Garden at Alpena Development, excuse me, that's supposed to be Gardens at Alpena. A corridor improvement authority and district must be established and a development and TIF plan must be developed for the CIA. We have worked with Mac McClellan for many years through our Brownfield program and have an existing services agreement with Mac Consulting Service LLC. Due to the nature of this project, we requested a separate proposal for the services. As you may recall, the project cost will be shared with the developer as a 50-50 split as part of that purchase agreement. The estimated total cost of the project is $16,520, but will be billed as actual time and materials. And so below I have two motions for your consideration.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, we have to do this in two motions, so.
I move that we approve the agreement with Mac Consulting Service LLC for CIA and district establishment in the preparation of a development plan and TIF plan for the CIA not to exceed a total project cost of $16,520 for a 50-50 split at $8,260 from fund balance of Allison Financial LTD LLC and authorize the city manager Smolinski to sign the agreement.
Second. Any discussion?
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye. We approve the budget amendment request to increase the professional contractual expense of the planning department of the general fund in the amount of $16,520 and a revenue in the amount of $8,260 for the reimbursement. The city's portion of the expense will be deducted from general fund balance.
Second.
Any discussion? No, Anna.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. So we're down to council committee reports. Danny, I'm going to start with you.
Why, because I got a few things here? Yes. Had a trip out to Mackinac Island this past week for the Michigan Municipal League. Lot of people to talk to, you know how shy I am about those kind of things, so. The first thing they wanted to make sure we knew is that there is no statewide ballot proposals this fall, so. But be waiting for the Acts by Tax to return, so. Revenue sharing will be nearly $700 million, which is an increase of $200 million over section situation. Public Safety and Violet's Trust Fund, they're going to see a $75 million increase to be distributed to the cities and villages. However, it requires the passage of house bills 4605 and 4606. And I've already had communications with our representatives, so I encourage the others to go through that as well. One of the big things that we're coming at that's been actually going on for almost 20 years is the landfill tipping fee. And they wanted to increase it, the state wanted to increase it from 38 cents per ton to $5.30 per ton. That's a big jump. And if that passed, you would see a great big increase in your garbage bill. And the, the thought process behind that kind of monies was, well, that will discourage the garbage coming from out of state or out of country. It won't do that. They'll just pay it because they don't want it to talk to Canada. That's the big thing. That, okay, road funding. A lot of the taxes are looking to get for the road funding, some monies that we might get or the county might get for the roads. It's like this, they're pushing for the end-of-year mileage taxing for EVs. And I said, does that mean then they're going to stop collecting taxes on the gas pumps? No. So they're going to try to collect both your tax at the end of the year and continue to charge you for the gas tax as well. So there's a big one to talk to your representatives over and try to hold that out. And then our big concern has to do with short-term rentals and there is a house bill out there that's going to have something to do with that and that's House Bill 5438. Currently, we're looking at control through local zoning or ordinances. It's like this, so we can still do that for now, but if this house bill went through, it would take it out of our control. So again, we have a lot to talk to our representatives about this situation. So that's all I have.
Because we're working on short-term rentals, so, okay. And the thing about, and they've talked for a lot of years about raising the tipping fee because it's too low. It's just too low. But it also encouraged people to recycle because they can save a lot of money on their garbage by recycling them in the bins. So it helps local recycling programs and helps to meet the, the quotas that the state has set over the next few years that they want to meet in recycling, so, you know.
It's just that kind of jump.
It's a big jump.
That's, that's way too much. You could look at it as saying your $54 garbage bill just went up to $200.
And, and I don't disagree unless you start recycling your garbage bill. But it pushes people to recycle because burying garbage, and this is just my opinion, but burying garbage in a landfill that we have to monitor forever is not cheap.
Well, judging from the dumpsters that are being used out there at Northern Lights, it's like this, a lot of people are, are utilizing it, it's like this. So back before, I could understand it. If, if anything, then a portion of that money should be coming to the recycling programs that they have at the state, but they weren't, they weren't talking about that.
But I think, I think eventually some of it will go toward recycling and I can.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna ask that question if they mentioned if some of that funding would come to fund recycling, which makes sense, but I don't know if that's been committed to yet.
Question had been brought up at the time when it was being discussed and they said at this time, there is no discussion about diverting any money over to the recycling programs.
What are they going to do with the extra money that they take in?
They didn't explain.
That's why I think some of it will make its way to recycling because it's a state initiative to increase recycling. So they have, if they're going to make it an initiative, then they have to fund it.
By that time, it should be house-to-house pickup of recyclables. If you're going to pay that much money out like that, it should be a house-to-house pickup. We did that up in Kenrath, so we were able to do that.
And I don't disagree, but recycling, local recycling and garbage are two different things. So recycling is run by the recycling authority. So we need trucks and bins and all of that to do that pickup. So the state will have to divert money to recycling for us to allow us to do that.
When it comes out in writing, I'll believe it.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, Danny?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So on recycling, we're moving along, our truck is on the road. So we're, we're part and part because we have to modify our bins. So the recycling truck is on the road sometimes until we get the rest of our bins modified and then it'll be on the road full-time. So that's going. Outside of that, we continue to march forward with the new facility and struggling with the facility that we have to keep up the materials that's coming in.
Is there a timeline or a date or a year that?
We are hoping, hoping by the end of 2025, we'll be up and running, but we have a few more pieces to put into place before that can happen. But we are working harder than anyone we've ever seen to get this project pulled across the finish line. So we are doing it. And the state, when it comes to recycling, because the state has an initiative that every county has to revamp their recycling program. So there is a, there's a planning process and we're planning with the five counties around us, with the exception, Prescott is not in with us yet, but they could come in at any time. Because when the counties around us, you know, Iasco, Asco to have to plan for their waste management, which includes recycling, they need to have a place to take it. And some of these communities don't even have a plan or program in place. So we're planning with them in hopes that the material will funnel its way to Alpena and help everyone. So those are things that are going on in recycling. Did I miss anything?
No, I was just trying, I think the state is requiring counties to recycle up to 45%. And there's a certain date, I think it's in the next 10 years or so, yeah.
Some other states have actually adopted that the carriers start doing curbside recycling as well. And so there's more and more individual companies that are carriers that are actually setting up their own recycling areas where they can actually pull things out of trash and go to a single line. So there's, there's some of that, you know, being kicked around above the state level. So I don't know where that's going to go. For my committee reports, as I said last week, one of the things that is great and the target development is there's a lot of things that I won't talk about, but there's a, the thing I can tell you is that the area is being looked at very closely and there is activity going on without getting specifics. You know, I'm excited for the next five years in Alpena for the economic growth, you know, so there's a lot of things coming. So I'm hoping, because I've been here now 12 years and, and it's been a lot of times for five years, but we've expanded and it's going to continue to go that way. And as far as my other committees, the 9/11 and emergency management, I have nothing to report on that.
Thank you.
So I attended several meetings, the zoning board of appeals, two, two appeals were heard about some fences on, for the same property owners on Towas and 11th. The Chamber of Commerce, I attended that and we have a couple ribbon cutting ceremonies coming up. And there is also the, sorry, the specific name is Good Day, Good Midday Lunch, which is, looks nice, and the Red, White and Blue Review. Rachel spoke to the Alpena Housing Task Force, so I don't need to read, to cover that again. As far as Little Red goes, we had the first meeting with our ad hoc committee and Kevin Fisher is going to talk about that in a bit. And just to add to what Danny said, I also attended the Michigan Municipal Leagues. And one of the things that was highlighted is making space instead of taking space. And I wanted to raise my hand like a kid and say, see our pocket park and our little alleyway that we've made space out of. So that was interesting and it was a good opportunity to meet people out there. They're all having same issues with rental properties, housing shortages, short-term housing efficacy and dealing with stressors. That was an interesting session to attend.
So we have no communications, no unfinished business, we're to new business. Council, we have Chief Edmonds talk to us about turnout gear.
He doesn't want anything, though. The other chief is ready.
I'm, I'm not like Chief Ham, so seems like every time I come here, I'm asking for something. So, good evening. In an effort to continue to protect our line fire suppression crews, we applied for a grant titled Firefighter Turnout Gear 2024 through Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. This grant was intended to provide every career firefighter with a backup set of turnout gear up to $3,500 per set. We're being awarded this grant request for the amount of $87,500 to outfit 25 members of the department. In addition to the grant-funded gear purchase, we have added three new personnel to the roster, requiring us to purchase an additional four sets of gear to also have them fully equipped with a primary and a secondary set of turnout gear. In total, we are looking to purchase a total of 29 sets of gear utilizing the grant funding award and funds in line item 101-336-723.001, which is titled Uniforms and Turnout Gear. The grant funds will be available to us once we provide proof of a PO number assigned and a confirmation order number from the vendor. There were three vendors that submitted quotes on turnout gears attached for your review, just for you, Mr. Nork. So we made sure we got three. The vendor Axes and Irons was the lowest price quote at $4,198.16 per set for the Fire Dex brand Aeroflex Black Pioneer Custom Turnout Gear that was requested to meet our gear needs. At this time, I am requesting council's approval to secure the purchase for the turnout gear through Axes and Irons utilizing the grant award and the line item funds as budgeted.
Are there any questions?
Ms. Mayor, this is not unusual, is it, Chief? Every firefighter has at least a couple sets of turnout gear just because of the cleaning of the gear and stuff that you have to go through and there has to always be another set ready.
Yeah, all of our career guys have had a second set for several years, probably most of my career.
Okay.
Mostly because if we have a fire due to carcinogens and that type of stuff producing cancer, we basically, we bought a gear washer and everything specifically for turnout gear. Also adds to the longevity of the gear as well.
Exactly, and what is the expected, like?
10 years. 10 years is the longest it can last according to NFPA specs and the Bureau of Fire Services in Michigan Miocia.
And in the interest of recycling, what happens to those uniforms?
So the old gear, we actually dispose of that. We don't, we used to give like to the schools that they could use as play stuff. The problem is we don't know if it still contains carcinogen-type stuff. So we don't do that anymore. We basically dispose of them. So there are companies out there that they'll make handbags and that kind of stuff with, there's really no value to any of them. So we do keep some of them in station for backup sets, to those backup sets, until they actually reach their expiration, because we can use them for training, just not for fire activity, because it, once it is outside that 10-year life expectancy, it's out of service for fire suppression anyways.
And I just, and I just want to point this out and I, and I know the answer, but we are approving 29, but we're ordering 30.
Yeah, we, we originally had gotten a price quote for 30 because we were, we thought we were going to have all 26 sets of gear because at the time we didn't have three new guys, but they excluded administration, so that's why I'm not in there. So they, they, they reduced it because there was way more need than there was funds available. So.
I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
We want you to have one.
I really appreciate the multiple quotes.
I figured you would.
Would you like me to go ahead with the motion?
Yes.
I move that we authorize Chief Edmonds to purchase 29 sets of Fire Dex Aeroflex Black Pioneer Custom Turnout Gear through Axes and Irons for $198 per set from line item
Second.
Any discussion? Anna.
Mayor Johnson?
Yeah, aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someday he'll just come up and give us good news.
Sure.
It's always good.
That's how, that's a big, I'm going to count that as a good news dance.
Now we're to be Sunrise Side Co-op Market lease agreement and Kevin Fisher, our harbor master.
Good evening and thank you all for seeing me today. I, so the Sunrise Side Co-op Market has been searching for a building to use for their winter markets and the building they've been looking for would optimally be large enough to enable the Sunrise Co-op Market to grow into a year-round market store to support, support multiple vendors. This building will be used on a vendor and consignment basis to help teach, nurture and support other small local businesses for them to grow, branch out on their own. And the size and location of the Marina Shop Building is an important aspect to their plans as they are anticipating using both the indoor and some of the outdoor space year-round for multiple events and other things of that nature. And having the Sunrise Side CSA Co-op Market at the Marina Shop Building will also help to support the marina as a viable destination for not only the local community, but also visitors and transient boaters alike. I also have a list here. We'll just get right to it. But, so I've been in discussion with the Sunrise Side Co-op and they have agreed to multiple lease agreement modifications if council so chooses to approve the lease with these modifications. Would you like me to go through some of these modifications? All right, so the first modification would be to end this agreement on June 30th of 2025. on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. And then relook at the agreement and stipulate that it can be updated for up to three year, one-year renewals. The third agreement would be, or the third modification would be all improvements must be left intact when the lease concludes. There would be no cap on rent. We would change the language so that there would be a thirty-day written with cause termination letter or a sixty-day termination without cause. The market activities will not interfere with the daily operations of the marina. I suspect that they would mostly support those. And they would also be more than willing to fill out event forms for any and all future events or festivals or classes that they choose to put on at the marina or in the building.
Kevin, if I may, I just wanted to, you know, let you know where that list came from. So I had some earlier conversation with Mayor Johnson and she had given me a list of proposed modifications. So I didn't want, I mean, that's not all, certainly if there are more things that need to be addressed, please let us know.
Was that, was that the end of your, was that the end of your list?
Yes. My social batteries have not recharged yet.
And I just have a couple more, because I was going through the last lease that we had, the lease that we have, another lease we have, and then the lease we just got on Friday. So, and I know we just got this on Friday, which I, and I had a discussion with Rachel about it earlier, but I didn't see it. And then once I saw it, and, and it's, and just so that you know, the market, it's nothing to do with the market. It's more to do with the language in the lease that I had concerns with. So what I would like to be defined in, in the agreement is, so they're leasing, I would like the twenty-four hundred square feet added to the lease. That's the size of the building. So they're leasing that, but then they discussed in the information that we got from the market that they want to utilize space outside of the building. I would kind of like that defined what that space is so that they're not all over the marina thinking that that's okay. I just want everybody to know and I want it written out. In, in, in their, in their business plan that they had sent, they had talked about using parking lots for events. I'm not sure we can, without a special event thing that we're going to allow them to use a parking lot, because the parking for the marina and visitors and whoever, so. And if there's other events going on like Brown Trout, all of that, those are sanctioned events by the city. They have to know that those events are gonna take place down there. Kevin looks forward with me.
I was having the same concern about like the brown trout becoming out of spaces taken up there. They're not be able to park out there for the things like this. And it might be a little tricky to sit there, even be able, the vendors to try to get in there. They might have to look at foregoing for that week or something, that period.
And maybe, and maybe during Brown Trout, maybe there's a spot in Brown Trout where they can come and allow them. I'm not saying they can't participate. It's just that if they, you know, that's why I want the outside space defined. And this year we'll move the fireworks, you know, it'll be most likely off a barge. So that's going to get really busy down there, which would be good for the market if they're opened. But parking and stuff for everyone else needs to stay open. I do want, so on number two under H, it says, shall comply with city ordinance, state and federal laws. I really would like us to put, comply with the city charter as well. Because fifteen point five of the city charter is important and that's to be in good standing, you know, with the city. So I would like city charter.
Absolutely.
Added to that. I also would like to, Kevin's gonna kill me. Like to address, because I know they have to follow all ordinances and stuff. But I would like to specifically address signage, because they will want to put up signage. So that has to be approved by the city for our ordinance anyway, but lighting. Because I don't want them to put up any lighting that's not approved, so it's draining on boaters and all of that. So signage and lighting will have to be approved. And it, and it kind of says that, that they have to follow ordinances, but those two that I see could be problematic.
We could put a note, I guess a bullet's under H if you want to call out specific things like, you know, lights and signage. It will be covered in the zoning ordinance. I'd have to talk to more about that. But we could certainly call it out. There's no harm in that.
Just let me, me. And they know they share the restroom, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, but it's not in the lease, so. It is in the other leases. It is in the other leases we have with the other people that they share restaurants. I just don't want people to be surprised by that. I think, I think we have it. Everything, of course, if we approve it with these modifications, we'll have to change the date on the lease. If people want time to think about it and go over it, we can bring it back at our next meeting. It will be up to council, whatever.
It'll be changed anyway before they approve.
Okay. But we could, we could approve this lease with the modifications that we talked about. We can do that. But if you want to see them and read them and make sure that everything is in place, we can bring it back to our next meeting. I'll do whatever council wants to. Bring it back?
Bring it back.
Okay, is that the consensus? Okay, so then I need a motion to.
I would move that we postpone the Sunrise Side Co-op Market lease agreement. Speaking in October.
Discussion?
Clarification question. So we had, you had mentioned the building, activities outside the building. So one of the things that, you know, we talked, Kevin and I talked about as far as language, any activities outside of the building footprint would need to be approved through the event application process. Will that cover it?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they can apply for, you apply for an event, an event.
And that would cover parking lots and parks and all of that. I just think that is a blanket statement. Okay.
I'm good with that. Does the market, do any, do you have any comments or what we just discussed?
My only concern, I, I don't think the market has any issues with any of that. We want to respect, you know, the boaters and the parking lot and other events. So that's, that's always something that's on our radar. Our only issue would be if you bring it back in two weeks, we don't have time to get the building ready before we're inside versus outside. So I think that would be our only hesitation is just the, we're losing two weeks of getting it ready and getting all of the vendors moved in, because there are so many individual vendors. It takes time to clean the space, take the space, get everything. So that would be our only concern is to wait two weeks.
That's a good point.
I mean, we could bring, I could certainly work with Kevin to make all the changes and send a clean copy to Bill for distribution.
I think there, you know, for myself and, you know, and I did make the motion to postpone, but honestly, I don't want to cost, you know, these guys have been very easy to work with. And I think that we've always tried to do our very best to be easy to work with as well. And we did make a lot of modifications and adjustments in this, so. I would say, Bill, I would need to move to rescind my motion then.
Yes.
So I'm gonna move to rescind my, postpone.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Anna, sorry.
We very much appreciate it.
Yes.
So could we make a motion then?
Let's finish, let's finish the one we have on the table.
Oh, oh, we'll do that, right.
Made a motion, then I rescinded the motion, so we didn't vote it on the first.
Okay.
And we didn't, we didn't never vote it on the first motion to postpone. Because we had discussion. So we would have to actually vote on that motion.
Probably should technically.
Should vote on that and then I can rescind it.
Well, if it fails though, then you don't have to rescind it.
That's true, too.
That's true. Yeah, so we can vote on that.
So we'll do his motion to put it on our next agenda. And it was seconded by, it was supported by Ken. Oh, I'm sorry, Danny.
Fine.
First one.
This case, we vote no on it, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I can't tell you how.
No, not yet.
Got a memo on this, didn't you see?
So, Councilmember Mitchell?
Oh, no anymore.
No.
This was a name.
So the motion, just so you know that we're voting on is to put it on our next agenda.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchak?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No. Now does someone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve, well, I'm sorry, Dan.
No, I said, yeah, that was what it was for. I'm sorry.
Okay, I move that we approve the Sunrise Side Co-op Lease Agreement as modified.
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. When does rent start? Is it prorated for the first month if they move in?
It would be prorated as far as, I mean, I think that's what we, I'm looking for Steve. Is he hiding? Anyway, we would prorate it. I mean, that makes sense to me.
And the date on the, on the contract that we have has to be updated, because it.
It's dated today.
Yeah, it's dated today.
And we can't, so we can't sign this, but there's a lot of modifications.
Right. I mean, we can get them done as early as tomorrow.
Okay.
I, you know. So we could date it.
I'll shred this.
Just a question for Cecilia, when would you want to get in?
As soon as you.
Okay, so tomorrow. So let's date it tomorrow, if that's acceptable to everyone.
Does that work, Anna?
I don't know. So we're not, we're gonna have a new copy of this, the sign is dated tomorrow with all the modifications that we're discussing. And then everybody will re-sign at the next meeting.
Uh, yes. Or before, we could sign it beforehand.
I can come in and sign it before.
Don't have to wait till the next meeting to sign it necessarily. He makes the changes, if they're comfortable with it, they sign it, we sign it. We can do that before the next meeting.
Okay.
And I can send a copy out to everyone.
Thank you.
So then prorated rent starting tomorrow through the end of the month. And then October starts and it's due by the fifth of the month, or to the contract. So are we filling out or are they just gonna?
What is easier? Look at Bill.
I think in our last one, it was just, they, it was on them to pass.
Alright.
Yeah, because no one else would, yeah. Hey, you're ready.
Okay, so we're ready for the vote now. This motion was to approve the co-op agreement as modified.
Correct.
Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchak?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Thank you. Funding for Little Red.
Yes, ma'am. All right, the city of Alpena has a very unique opportunity available to it right now. DPI has granted the Michigan Lighthouse Conservancy and the city of Alpena limited access to Little Red for historical and rehabilitative purposes. Little Red is very well-known within this community and it is also a very unique feature of Alpena and its rich maritime heritage that is in desperate need of preservation. To facilitate this historical survey of Little Red, the Michigan Lighthouse Conservancy has been in communication with Saunders and Zapsky. I hope I didn't.
You did, yeah.
Awesome. Zapsky Associates, an architecture, landscape architecture and historic preservation company based in Marquette, Michigan. This company is able to conduct a study of Little Red to evaluate its current conditions as well as prepare rehabilitation drawings and plans for future renovations and maintenance work of Little Red. The firm provided a quote of sixty-eight hundred dollars to the Michigan Lighthouse Conservancy in the city of Alpena to complete this work. Currently, Saunders and Zapsky is the only known firm to do these types of studies. To accomplish this goal, the city can appropriate funds from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Parks Budget. After reevaluating upgrades planned for various city parks, we believe that many of these improvements can be accomplished more economically than previously anticipated and adequate funding will be available for those. My recommended motion as Parks Coordinator for council is as follows. Motion to approve the use of six thousand eight hundred dollars of Parks funding for the historical survey and maintenance recommendations for Little Red Lighthouse.
So anyone have questions for Kevin?
Kevin, the only question that I have, sorry, Ms. Mayor, is that this is not an unusual practice. You know, because I do like multiple bids and I really don't like studies that have to, you know, do studies for maintenance studies or whatever. But when we do something historical like this, when you're into like a lighthouse and you're looking to get it back to its original, then these kind of studies are very commonplace, as I.
Yeah, absolutely. And they're also quite literally, I believe, the only firm on the east side of this country that'll do these studies.
Unique, so. And in addition, this fellow happens to be in Alpena in October.
He will be, yes.
We do the study at that time, so worked out very well in that regard.
And DPI will allow him on their property to do it when he's here. So, and this is the very first step in what could be a long project, but it's an essential step.
I move that, as, to approve the use of six thousand eight hundred dollars of Parks funding for the historical survey and maintenance recommendations for Little Red.
Second. Any discussion? Anna?
Councilmember Walchak?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
We're to close session?
Mrs. Mayor, I move that we adjourn to discuss water consumer litigation.
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Right, keep a backup.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Mitchell? Mayor Proton Noah?
Aye.
Councilmember Walchak?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm just so excited.
This conference will now be recorded.
We're back from closed session and we have no more business before council, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mrs. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I can do the last word.
For you, Dan.